So all back to gavel? Everybody ready? Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the reorganization meeting of January 3, 2022. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Hall News Tribune of January 13, 2021, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Please stand and we'll do a flag salute. Also, we won't be having an invocation because we had a cancellation. So we'll just do a moment of silence and a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So now we will use the administration of the Oats. Okay, so first I'd like to call Richard Revulinski to the podium with his family, his wife Jennifer, and his children Everett and Adeline. And note your parents are here. Okay, so I'm going to give you one copy, but you can...
And then someone will hold the Bible for him to read?
Oh, yes, sorry. Do you want me to do repeat after, Mimi? Okay, or just read?
Yeah, either way, if he's comfortable to repeat after, you can do it.
You want to do repeat after?
Sure.
Okay. I, Richard Revulinski...
I, Richard Revulinski.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States...
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly...
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of council member...
Perform all the duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And now you can have a seat at the podium. Okay, Mr. Potter? There's a copy of the Oath, just in case you want to glance. And Mr. Potter is accompanied by his wife Christine and his children Logan and Courtney. And we also have his parents, Mel and Diane Potter here. Ready? I, David Potter...
I, David Potter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States...
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly...
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of council member...
Perform all the duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So now I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
This is an attendance roll. Councilwoman Newbauer?
Present.
And Councilwoman Newbauer, for the record, is called in this evening. Councilwoman O'Donnell, here. Councilwoman Freddi?
Here.
Councilwoman Potter?
Here.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Here.
And Councilwoman Zambranne?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to election of a council president. Resolution 001-2022. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for council president for 2022.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilman Phil Zambranne.
I'd like to second.
Are there any other nominations? Some nominations are now closed. May I have a motion to appoint Phil Zambranne council president for 2022?
Madam Mayor, make a motion.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Freddi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Zambranne?
Epstein.
Motion carries to nominate Mr. Zambranne as council president.
Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So now we move on to the mayor's message. Tomorrow, from another holiday tradition here in Milltown, I'll start with, citizens of Milltown, good evening. I hope you all enjoyed the holiday season with your friends and family. Unfortunately, many of our plans were again affected by COVID. I'll talk about the borough's proposed response to the surge shortly. First, I want to start by welcoming our two new council members, Richard Revulinski and Dave Potter, and congratulating our new council president, Phil Zambranne. I also want to thank our departing councilmen Randy Farkas and Nick Legotti for their many years of service to the borough. I'm looking forward to working with all the council members this year. It is customary in the borough form of government for the mayor to give a state of the borough message at the reorganization meeting. I'm pleased to report that the state of the borough of Milltown is strong. Our strength comes from the dedication of our borough employees, the enduring commitment of our volunteers and first responders, and from the community spirit of our residents and local businesses. I was sworn in as mayor two years ago. Sadly, we've been dealing with COVID almost that whole time. I'm extremely grateful and proud that no borough services were interrupted due to COVID. The town, state, country, and the whole world has been severely impacted by the Omicron variant surge. The surrounding towns of East Brunswick, North Brunswick, and New Brunswick issued executive orders for a mask mandate on New Year's Eve. While the safety of our employees and residents is my paramount concern, I will not be issuing an executive order. Throughout the pandemic, the borough has followed state guidelines. Currently, there is no state mandate. The CDC and State Health Department strongly encourage the wearing of masks in public in areas such as ours with high transmission rates. I too encourage you to wear a mask in public settings where distancing is not possible. We've asked those entering Borough Hall this evening to wear masks to protect the borough employees. Also, we will provide these signs to any businesses, to all the business people around town, so that they can request that people wear masks to protect their employees and customers. Enforcement of a local mandate could further burden our business people and our borough employees. Additionally, to insist on our residents with health and wellness in the future, I will be adding Milltown to the statewide mayor's wellness campaign. This idea arose in a committee earlier this year, and I will provide details at our next council meeting. Despite the challenges that COVID presented, the borough has had a very productive year and is poised to continue to make improvements in 2022. I'll highlight the accomplishments of each department first. I'm going to read most of the department's statements, particularly since we didn't do this last year due to the virtual meet. I'll start with the Milltown Police Department. Throughout the 2021 calendar year, the police department successfully achieved their goals by continuing to provide professional and effective law enforcement services to the community that we serve. Throughout 2021, they answered 13,826 calls for service through their communication center. Knowing that a high-visibility traffic enforcement program limits crime, our patrol officers conducted 2,400 motor vehicle stops and conducted over 1,500 radar runs. Our patrol staff responded to thousands of calls for service ranging from medical emergencies, retail crimes, property crimes, violent crimes, and many quality-of-life complaints. Our detective bureau completed numerous criminal and narcotics investigations resulting in numerous arrests and crime solves. Our police officers, communication staff, administrative staff, and crossing guard staff participated in over 1,000 hours of mandatory training and professional development. This training helped them to maintain the highest standards and modern practices that are accredited status mandates. To be more fiscally responsible, our staff sought out ways to obtain much-needed equipment and funding for police-related services. The staff participated in many community outreach events and programs. Some of these events included the 2021 Special Olympics Torch Run, Safe Roots to School, Letters for Santa, Special Needs Registry, and Blue Angel Program. Our officers continue to raise money during the 2021-2022 Winter Wool for a Cure Campaign. They look forward to continuing with the highest level of professionalism in 2022 and continue to strive for excellence and promise to maintain the high level of public trust that they have earned. Next, we'll go to the Milltown Fire Department. 2021 was an eventful year for the Milltown Fire Department. Members worked incredibly hard to complete the transition into the new firehouse after cleaning out and moving the final pieces of equipment. The Eureka Fire Museum donated a majority of its artifacts to the New Jersey State Fire Museum in Allentown, New Jersey, including its 1947 American Le France fire truck. The department worked through COVID without any lapses in service despite many members being positive or quarantining for health reasons. The department conducted over 30 training drills, including two live burns at the Middlesex County Fire Academy, as well as responding to numerous calls for service, including fires, motor vehicle accidents, hazardous situations, gas leaks, and natural disasters such as Hurricane Ida. The department responded to neighboring communities for mutual aid and worked cooperatively with the Milltown Police Department and the Milltown Rescue Squad. Equipment and vehicle maintenance proved to be a challenge due to the aging fleet and parts shortages. Unfortunately, the department lost ex-chief Brian Bush, who died of brain cancer. They also had two members resign but gained three members. The membership looks forward to the completion of the final punch list at the firehouse and the moving of the department's memorial in time for Memorial Day. Next, we'll do the Department of Public Works. 2021 was a very busy year for DPW. Along with all daily collections and curbside bulk collections, they continued during trying times, DPW was also able to have many goals that were set at the beginning of the year be realized. The tree list has been verified and tree removals began. The removals will continue both in-house and by contractor until the list is finished. The Tracy Drive Road project has been completed. The department saw three retirements of longtime employees, and we wish them all well. DPW continues with line painting, street sign maintenance, pothole repair all around town. Repairs have been made at numerous parks, and maintenance will continue into the new year. The DPW, utility department, and construction offices moved to the new building at 50 Washington Avenue, and operations are continuing without interruption. They look forward to the new year to continue ongoing projects and explore new ones. And now the rec department. Unfortunately, during the winter of 2021, due to COVID, there were no rec programs. However, in the spring, they restarted soccer and track-and-field clinics. They also had the recreation soccer program and youth tennis, and they started back with adult and youth yoga. In 2021, unfortunately, the summer Saff program did not run due to the pandemic. However, it was nice to have the borough pool back open. It offered daily and seasonal badges to residents and nonresidents. They offered pre-teen nights, adult nights, and teen nights. They had about four different camps utilizing the pool throughout the summer and paying daily camper rates. And swim lessons were also offered. Albert Avenue Rec Summer Camp ran, and they had a strong enrollment rate with a lot of positive feedback from parents. Technical difficulties up here, too. And there was also beach volleyball at the pool. And then in the fall, they got back to much more normal soccer program, adult yoga, women's volleyball, men's basketball, and they look forward to doing even more of that in 2022. In addition, the rec department is always instrumental in the September 11 candlelight vigil, planning of Milltown Day, and the annual tree lighting ceremony. Next is the tax and utility collection office. Despite a tumultuous pandemic year and the signing of several executive orders by Governor Murphy prohibiting charging any interest or fees to any residential utility accounts or taking those residential utility accounts to tax sale, the tax and utility department continued to send quarterly reminders of past due invoices, which aggressively reduced the number of delinquencies. Although Milltown has approximately 2,900 tax line items, only one property went to this year's online tax sale, which resulted in premiums of $45,800. The remainder of the properties paid their 2020 tax bills in full. Over the past year, the utility billing office worked with the borough's water department to replace over 400 water meters throughout the town to eliminate estimated water reads and allow easier accessibility to the meters. The utility billing department hired a new staff member in August. She has been effectively cross-trained and has been a great addition to the department. Additionally, the tax department's part-time assistant has successfully completed Tax Collection 1, administered by the Division of Local Government Services to help service the needs of the public. Now we'll go on to the municipal clerk's office. And I will say that our municipal clerk posted all of the responsibilities of the clerk's office, and I hope you'll go online and look at that because it was actually eye-opening to me, too. There is, by statute, a lot that the clerk's office does. But through 2021, the clerk's office executed 22 professional service contracts and received 45 RFPs for 2022 appointments. They did the annual filing with LGCCC, processing an issue of 19 raffle applications and licenses, no bingo due to COVID. They coordinated with the police department to license five record companies and get all of the equipment inspected by the police department. Monthly billing is coordinated through the clerk's office. They processed 450 dog license renewals, or no, sorry, 450 letters went out, and 369 licenses were processed through the office in 2021. A total of 21 agenda meeting packets and minutes were prepared. That includes 281 resolutions. 69 financial disclosure notifications for state filing were distributed to all designated board and committee members. The clerk's office also served as administrator of the local primary and general elections. They prepared and sent renewals for 56 current annual food handler permits, and they process and issue all the permits, as well as all the alcohol and beverage licensing for the liquor licenses in Milltown. They conducted bid openings and contracts in three new projects. They did the grant proposal and backup documents for LDVG improvements and Clean Communities, which is a lot of preparation for this reorg this year and last year, and also prepared death certificates, marriage license, and many different copies of vital statistics records. As well, one of the things that the clerk's office assists with is the Board of Health. The Board of Health meetings were held by Zoom through August. In September, they went back to in-person meetings with full attendance. The Board of Health held their annual rabies clinic in May and vaccinated 50 dogs. There will be another one this year on May 24, and the council approved interlocal agreement for two years with the Middlesex County Board of Health. The county will continue doing all health inspections and investigate any health-related concerns. Now the senior citizens. The Milltown Senior Center was closed from January till July. Gradually, the senior center has been getting back to normal activities. Activities that are enjoyed by the members have resumed, such as walk aerobics, line dancing, yoga, men's club, and bingo. New classes of Tai Chi, strength training, and arts and crafts have been added as well. The senior director reinstated the monthly checkups from the Visiting Nurse Association. The nurse provides monitoring of vital signs, medication review, and disease prevention information. In 2021, the senior center had many presentations and workshops by local health agencies covering topics such as cancer prevention, cholesterol balance and falls, and reducing stress. There were also many fun presentations, such as glam and gorgeous beauty tips, canvas painting, The Price is Right, and Christmas movie spectacular. The senior center was also instrumental in collecting for many charity drives in the area. The seniors communicate with the business administrator and the council liaison in monthly wrap session. I was pleased to be able to attend the senior holiday party, and it was nice to see everyone there. The senior director has even more new initiatives planned for 2022. And now our engineering projects. A number of important projects have been completed or been implemented in 2021. The construction of the Tracy Drive improvements have been completed. The work was partially funded by a $500,000 NJ DOT municipal aid grant received by the borough. In addition, the borough received a municipal aid grant for $555,000 for the West Fosh roadway improvements, which will also be used for improvements to Hague and Coteine Avenue. The design of the project is completed, and bidding will begin in early '22. PSENG will complete their gas main improvements before the roadway project begins. The borough also received a $520,000 DOT grant, which will be used for improvements to Clayton Court. Design and bidding will commence in 2022. The contract for water distribution system in the Chestnut Street-Hyland Drive area has been awarded to a contractor and is expected to commence in early 2022, subject to the availability of materials. This work is funded by a $700,000 grant received from the state with the assistance of our assemblyman, Joe Danielson. Finally, athletic field lighting improvements are slated to be performed in 2022. The work will be performed through a cooperative purchase organization and is funded with a matching grant from the Middlesex County Open Space Fund. Wow, that's a lot of stuff. So I would like to... That's everything, not everything, but a lot of the highlights of what's gone on here. What I'd like to say is the council's planning and action has enabled many of the previous accomplishments. The Finance Committee's decision to put money into the DPW budget allowed the tree removal to proceed. DPW did many with their own personnel, but the really big trees required a tree service. I've heard from people who have had trees on that tree list for 13 years that were thrilled that the borough finally got to their trees. The dead and unsafe trees will finally be removed. Additionally, the Finance Committee this year put money back in the budget for yearly milling and paving of roads. That had not been done for at least the last five or six years. Now, each year, several roads needing repaving will be done in-house by the Department of Public Works. Also, the Utility Committee was instrumental in achieving the waterline improvements for Chestnut and Hyland and are planning for future improvements with the $2 million grant we received from the state this year. I will add that that was all done with very small tax rate increases over the last two years. While talking about taxes, I'd also like to mention that we'll be doing a presentation later this year to illustrate where and how your tax dollars are used. The municipal tax is about 20% of your total tax bill, so we'll show you all the services you receive from the borough. You've just gotten a pretty good preview here this evening. Each department has a councilperson and a committee that advocates for the needs of that department. In addition, each councilperson acts as liaison for borough committees. I'm very happy to report that the committees have been very active and engaged this year. The Historical Preservation Committee, Human Relations Committee, Revitalization Committee, Green Team, Environmental Commission, Library Board, Rec Advisory Committee, OEM, and many others have met throughout the year and contributed significantly to the borough. I thank all the members who work hard and exemplify the volunteerism and community spirit I spoke about earlier. As I've outlined this evening, the borough has accomplished a great deal in 2021. We'll discuss our goals for 2022 at subsequent meetings. I sincerely thank all the employees, council members, borough professionals, and volunteers for their work that benefits everyone in Milltown. Thank you for your attention and patience this evening and listening to what's happening in our greatest little town in the land. I wish you all a very happy and healthy New Year. Thank you. Now we can move on to the consent resolution. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the borough council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Does anyone want to pull any resolutions from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. 22-2022 and 48-2022. Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Will the clerk please read the consent resolution? With... That's right, Mimi, and then we'll vote on that.
Yeah, we'll vote on that packet, and then we'll deal with each one individually. Yep, that will be fine. Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting. Whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for resolutions 02 through 44 for this meeting, but 22 and 48 have been asked to be pulled for special consideration. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and borough council of the borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the other individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
Before the reading of this resolution, what is your pledge?
Madam Mayor, I move that these resolutions be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman Revulinski. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
And I call the roll for approval of resolutions 002 through 49, with the exclusion of 22 and 48. Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Freddi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Aye.
And Council President Zambranne?
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 022-2022 by Kyle?
022-2022 is a resolution of the borough council of the borough of Milltown, appointing members to the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency.
You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pledge?
Actually...
Oh, sorry. We'll do that, and then we'll do the stuff.
Yeah, the reason I asked this one to be pulled was because I had previously served on the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency prior to serving on council, as well as during my tenure when I was previously on council. And I'd like to respectfully request your consideration to put me on here as council representative.
Okay. I'll have to take a look at that. So, Mimi, what do we do now? Do we vote on it, and then... Or can we table it till the next time?
Let me just look and see who.
Because I'm not sure.
They do have to have a reorg?
Right in front of us. I mean, I could take a look. Of course, anybody's welcome to come and participate in the agency meeting.
Well, at this point, you have a resolution that's on your agenda. You have the ability to move it or not move it. Obviously, Councilman Revulinski has offered an opinion as to how he believes the resolution might be changed, and certainly the council either needs to take some action with respect to 022-2022 or not. to 022-2022 or not.
I said that because I don't have it right in front of me, so thank you.
You got it.
Appreciate it. So I'm not aware of the makeup, but, so I appreciate your, and we will certainly look through your input on that. So that said, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Council President Zambrona, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Dubauer?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revelinsky?
No.
Council President Zambrona?
Aye.
Motion carries for 22, 2022.
Right. So now will the clerk please read 048, 2022, by tile?
048, 2022, resolution authorizing certain personnel actions for finance.
Okay, may I have a, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I ask for this one to be pulled because I'm seeing here, and this is the first time, and I understand there might be some time considerations here because it shows that the effective date of a new hire for full-time secretary and the amount of $50,000 is to be on February 7th for the Finance Department. And I'm curious, number one, do we have someone who is retiring or stepping down or eliminating a position in which this is fulfilling? Number two, what are the roles and responsibilities of this position? And number three, how does this salary or the offer of $50,000 that's indicated here compare with the current salaries of existing employees?
So I can mention part of that, and I'm glad that you'll be part of the Personnel Committee this year, so we can certainly get into that more, but I will defer to the Business Administrator because that's her department, and she has, it is to fill a role that has been open for a while, but Jack, do you have any other details you'd like to ask?
So I can certainly add to that. So yes, we've had a vacancy in the department since October of 2019. And as a part of the restructuring process that has been going on in the municipality for the past two and a half years, this particular role is not only going to fill the void that has been there since that time period, but it's also going to enable us to take things to the next level, as this will not only fill that position, which has been reorganized and made more efficient, but it will take on additional roles of both finance and administrative assistance. So as far as how it compares to other positions within the Borough, there is no position that enables someone to come in and wear multiple hats to do different tasks relating to two different departments. And so that's where the, you know, this is going to cover payroll, escrow, finance management, administrative assistant, HR backup, all of the redundancy that we currently do not have.
I see, and this position falls under the category listed under Ordinance 211506 as, what, senior account clerk?
It's secretary, and it's an unclassified civil service position.
Okay.
So it's all encompassing of any responsibilities and duties that are assigned to it.
My concern is that we have a salary range indicated as secretary from $30,000 to $50,000. And I know you got to pay for quality, that's for sure, but I have concern at starting someone, if that is the intent here, is to start at a salary of $50,000. That is the intent?
That is the intent.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other discussion? So I'll need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 048, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Council President Zambrona, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the rolls?
Councilwoman Dubauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revelsky?
No.
And Council President Zambrona?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to mayoral appointments. May I have a motion to accept mayoral appointments for the year 2022 as stated in Resolution 050, 2022?
Madam Mayor, make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Dubauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revelsky?
Aye.
Council President Zambrona?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to accept the working subcommittees and council assignments for the year 2022 as stated in Resolution 051, 2022, and 052, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council President Zambrona, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Dubauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revelsky?
Aye.
Council President Zambrona?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business they'd like to bring before us today? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they'd like to bring before the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, in preparation for getting up here, I actually looked into some of the block and lot and property ownership, and I'd like to get this council's approval on digging into this a little bit deeper on who owns the railroad tracks that cross over Borough Pond. I understand that the property adjacent or between Borough parking lot and the post office is owned by one individual. It looks like there is a utility or a railroad easement next to Wells Fargo that would be owned most likely by Wells Fargo or formerly Wachovia, and specifically the trestle in between there, because one of my initiatives here is to, that I'd like to accomplish over the next three years, is to have that trestle removed and generate a walking path. And I'd like it to be, you know, something that the entire council can get behind, and I think now more than ever, we should take the steps to move forward and do our due diligence.
So, well, thanks for looking into it already, and I would imagine that there are other council people that will be glad to work with that and through the committees.
I was going to say, the Historic Preservation Committee started looking into that, too. So I was the liaison last year, so I can forward you some notes on that stuff.
Sure.
And also the Environmental Commission, a little bit of DPW and utility. So I think it'd be great if everyone could work together on that.
And Recreation, I'm sure.
True, true. Yeah, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we actually talked about that at our most recent Green Team meeting as well.
Exactly, right, right. So it's on a lot of people's radar, so thanks for bringing it up. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any new business? Hearing none, I will close new business and open, go to audience comments. The public, excuse me, the public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment, the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of the public has any questions they seek answers to, they can make an appointment with the appropriate office or with the council members at any time. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes. Yes, sorry, I just noticed, if you don't, can some, Russ, can you turn the podium around? Or some, oh, thanks, Mark. We forgot to do that after the swearing.
Debbie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. As a library employee, I want to thank Margaret O'Donnell for all of her support and interest in the Milltown Library. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to serving as the Library Board Liaison again in 2022.
And that's a good segue into congratulating and wishing Bonnie Sterling well. She just finished her service to the Borough after eighteen years on, at the end of the year, and we had a nice ceremony at the library, and Debbie, thanks for all that you've done to ease with the transition. Much appreciated. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Is there anything further that anyone on the council would like to bring up this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome Councilman Revelsky to the Milltown Borough Council, like to welcome Councilman Potter to the Milltown Borough Council, and to thank all of you for the nomination as council president. I look forward to working with all of you in 2022. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to thank all the Borough residents, my family, my friends, for their support in getting me on council and for the next three years and hopefully more. I am going to put 110% and keep things moving forward, and I look forward to working with you and this great council. Thank you.
And I'll second that. It's good to be back up here. Again, I appreciate everyone's support through the campaign season. Truly look forward to working with my neighbor Dave and the rest of the council up here. I think together and working together, we're really going to accomplish some great things.
Absolutely.
Agreed. And I will add a second, third that, because I'm, congratulations, happy to have all of you. I really think that, well, everyone will work well together, and we still, even though we have got a lot done in the last couple of years, we still have a lot more to do, and, you know, we'll all do it together, so I'm looking forward to it. With that, I will conclude mayor comments and take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Now second that.
A motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman Peretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks all for coming. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Stay well.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thanks, and take care.
You, too. Have a good one. Absolutely. Let's work for it.